Okay, go ahead.
Okay, at this time, I would like to call the special board meeting to order. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Hall?
Yes.
Solis?
President.
Pike?
Here.
Segura?
Here.
Tarantino?
Here.
Jenny?
Here.
Ethan, are you with us?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I would like you to join me in a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by our student board member, Ethan Collier.
Put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you, Ethan. Welcome to everybody who is listening in. This is our second, I guess you would call it, audio board meeting, and it is a special meeting, and we have three items on the agenda. And I would like to read the following statement. Per Government Code Section 54954.3, this is the point on the agenda where the board will hear any public comments that have been submitted to the board on any topic that has been described in the notice for the special meeting before or during consideration of that item. So, Madam Clerk, I think it would be easier, I don't know, you tell me, would it be easier if there's a public comment, that the public comment be read before we consider each item, or do you want it all in the totalities? What would be most convenient?
There are no public comments, Mr. Tarantino.
Oh, okay, all right. Then, if there are no public comments, then we will move to the action and discussion items. C1, which is the ratified emergency purchase of 3,100 computer devices from Aerie Jones, 2,700 Lenovo Chromebooks, and 400 Lenovo Windows 10 laptops to be used for students and staff for distance learning and telework needs. Is there a presentation, Mr. De La Calzada?
Basically, there is no presentation, but I'd be happy to answer how we arrived at that point.
It's a little hard to hear you, Mr. De La Calzada. There is no staff presentation, but we're happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay, so, there was quite a bit of backup on this item, so what we'll do is, we'll go up and down the dais a couple times to see if any board members have any comments or questions on the item, and if you are looking at one of the backup materials, if you could please reference the page. I know that there's a couple of sets of pages one to three and stuff like that, but if you could, so that we can all follow along with what you're doing, okay? We'll begin with our student board member, Mr. Collier.
Um, just as of right now, so, okay, so, it's $644,000 spent from the general fund, correct? Or what's the total on this, like, the total expenditure?
I believe the total expenditure is 1.55 million.
Okay.
And then, there's a breakdown, even if you look at the second page of the board item, there's a breakdown of where the rest, how the money is going to be apportioned for resource codes, so, you're right, there's 644,000 for distance learning, which will be funded from the general fund. And that is, it says here, the recent apportionment from the state under SC117. 903,000 will be funded from the general fund for the 2019-2020 school year, and of that 903,000, 579,000 is currently unbudgeted and will be reflected in the third interim report, which I believe is coming out May 11th, but I stand corrected if that's not when it's coming out. And then, the district is awaiting the apportionment under the federal CARES Act, which will be applied to this unbudgeted amount by fiscal year end. Does that help answer your question?
Yeah, helps answer my questions.
Okay, all right, Mrs. Hall?
Yeah, okay, I have unmuted now, is that correct?
Yeah, we can hear you great.
Okay, good, because I had unmuted before, and I didn't want to, like, make a lot of noise, but I do have some questions. My first observation is that I know that the school district is getting a total of that $644,000 under this allocation from SC117 COVID-19 LEA Response Fund from the state. So, they can't use all of it for the devices, because there is an indirect cost that is applied to that total, which reduces the amount of money that can actually be used for this purchase order, and that amount that it should be, it's off, is by $33,689. So, the total amount that would be designated out of the 7388 resource is only $610,311. So, that difference has to go into the unrestricted general fund money, the 4-0 resource, and that total, revised total, would be $612,689. I want to make that sure that's on the record and that we amend this item, even though it's a ratification, because, and that's the problem with having things like this ratified, or at least the action on it not being done earlier, or to include the board earlier. I understand there's a lot going on, but it could, you know, so, that aside, that's one thing. My next question is, I asked how they determine the numbers of devices needed, and we got some information about an hour ago via email from Diane that gives some information. I haven't really been able to, you know, test it out or whatever, but I appreciate that we got something. I had asked back in, early in April, about exactly some of this information, so I wonder, does this mean that all teachers have laptops? Mr. De La Calzada, if you're only ordering about 3,600, or how many in total are we ordering here?
We're ordering 3,100 devices.
3,100 devices, and in your summary, I was just reading it, on your new device, I think it says that students have, you need 3822 laptops, you need 2559, 2,559 here, so the difference is for staff? Or is it to have emergency ones on order, or what is that?
It is for all the above indicators, and so, if I may summarize.
David, could you speak louder, please?
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
It's a little better, you sound muffled.
Okay, all right, I will.
It sounds like you're talking through a mask, David.
One second.
No pun intended.
He's probably looking for his, he's probably looking through his notes, so we just need to give him a minute, you know?
Okay. And Paula, you can, we'll give you a chance to look through the information that was sent, and then you could ask questions about it, so that you're, you can have some time.
Well, that question I just asked related to it, so, I was relating it to, my question was related to the second page of that item we just received, where it says laptops needed towards the top, right side of the.
Okay, yes, I see, okay, okay.
They have the laptops needed, 2,555, and then, yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, David, much better, thank you.
Okay, great, okay, I took off my earpiece, so let's, let me address the question, please. Thank you for the question. The, on the first page, that certainly identifies the summary of what we're doing with the 3,100 devices. We are purchasing for both students and staff. The 3,100 that was actually identified includes the students and the breakdown associated to that. If you'll notice on that last paragraph on page one, basically, we are repurposing a number of devices for student needs, but we're also taking into account our laptops that are in, being repaired, as well as laptops that we're servicing through Aerie Jones. And so, if you'll notice, going to page two, and the paragraph that anticipates, we also anticipate the need to provide key staff members with no assigned laptops, devices for telework purposes, and so, we've included that in the 400 devices of the 3,100 to address for 100 staff members, and this will include the learning center staff, as well as long-term substitutes. And so, yes, we are addressing both the student and staff needs.
Is that only school site staff, or is that office staff as well?
School site staff, office site staff, and basically, all learning centers.
So, could you get, you know, you surveyed families, correct, and staff?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Because you did it after the fact, or before, whatever, I mean, I think it was probably for families that was going out after the, you know, we went to spring break or something, but, how many, how many did you survey, and how many did you get responses from?
So, that's not a, that's, David, hang on a second, that's not a David question, that is a Dan Winters question, and Dan Winters, are you on, and you can respond to that question, please?
Yes, good evening, I am on, so, the question was about how many we surveyed?
As a student, to start with, let's just talk about students first.
You bet. So, we've received approximately 37,000 responses, some of those are duplicates and invalid responses, so we've been able to validate approximately 30,000 student responses, and every day, schools have been calling to follow through on those that we still have not yet, I think.
So, how many were invalid or duplicates?
Approximately 8,000.
8,000. And as it seems that you, are you keeping a daily log of how many you're receiving from the ones that weren't contacted?
Absolutely.
So, by now, how many are still out there?
So, as I said, the ones that have validated are up to 29,000, so, we have approximately 37,000 active students, we have somewhere between 7, 7,500, I would say, students who have not yet to respond.
Okay. So, back to David, thank you, Mr. Winters. David, did you have, you did have something in there, in your calculation, that had, had for reimagined sites, for reimagined, or laptops that are waiting to be maybe reimagined, and I assume you have a few that are probably, maybe students had had something happen to it right before we went out on spring break, so, how many of those do you feel are viable computers to be distributed, 225?
Well.
That doesn't even include damaged ones that are out, oh, yeah, you do have laptops to be repaired, 200, yep, okay. Good day, James.
So, the intent was really to identify all available computers that we could use for student and/or staff needs, and so, that chart that says laptops available summarizes the current, current status before the 3,100 purchase, and so, we anticipate about 2,339 that will be available after we reimage the computers on the carts at all the schools. We anticipate that we will have spare laptops at the site, 808, which we are collecting. We're also reimagining various computers at the sites, which is 225. The 250 that are noted as pool laptops and IT, that's basically our reserves, as well as those that were not distributed to the high schools before we completed our distribution. And then, laptops by Aerie Jones, we did receive 182, we anticipate one other small batch, so we will have about 200 laptops that have been repaired and will be ready for student distribution. And so, that count right there, basically, is what we have, is basically utilized regarding how many devices we need to purchase.
Okay, thank you. So, let me read my next question. I'm not a techie, so I'm reading your laptop and that, I didn't really read the quote. Some of the technology that's in here, when it says wireless intel, does that mean that they can connect without having to go to a Wi-Fi, they can just have a direct connect?
No, basically, there is no broadband capability in the laptops we're purchasing, that's basically a wireless network interface card that allows that computer to connect to a wireless network.
So, that's the laptop, then, the Lenovo, I mean, the Chromebooks?
The Chromebooks and the Windows 10 devices, that's correct.
So, what's the plan for students that don't have any connectivity?
Our plan is basically to evaluate, I guess, let me step back a piece, we needed to determine how many students would possibly need Internet at home, and so, based on the survey that was completed by Dan, basically, we identified some house, I guess it was approximately 2,200 families that probably needed Internet access. Based on our free and reduced, we had a number anywhere between 3,500 and 7,500 families that could possibly utilize Internet access, and so, we are, have evaluated the Cox Communications C2C program, which is the Connect to Compete program, and what it provides is basically a modem device at the home, which will allow a computer to connect to their ISP services or Internet services, and so, they're providing a 60-day free program, and basically, each month after that would be $9.95, or approximately $10 a month. And so, the unfortunate problem with this program is that only students that are, have been included in our free and reduced meal programs would qualify for that, and if they don't have a Cox Communications account. And so, we understand that there are families that will probably not, not qualify for the free and reduced program, but however, they'll need Internet access at home. And so, we've taken a look at three providers, T-Mobile, Sprint, and Verizon, and the assessment associated to those, and really, it's applicable nationwide, there are no available hotspots available for purchase or for use for any type of program. And so, what's available at this point in time is basically a locked-down cellphone, which would provide connectivity to the Internet, and however, it's $99 per device, and that cost varies between $10 and $15 a month. Verizon provides a program called Jetpack, the particular problem is that it will, it will cost $45 per month. Now, they did come back with a reduced price today, in fact, however, they cannot guarantee the support of the figures that we're looking at, anywhere from 2,000 to 4,000, and so, it will take anywhere from one to three months to service that ministry. And so, we are still looking at those three programs to try to finalize those, as well as address those families that have refused Internet access and/or devices with a paper.
Sorry?
With a, with a paper packet program that teaching and learning is evaluating, so, hasn't been finalized yet, but that's basically the information we have today.
Okay, yeah, I understand that, what's happening, I'd like to have some of those costs, if you could, in advisory or whatever, send that information to me, because I'm, yeah, I need it. But, my last question, I think I've had another question. The staff and teachers, are they able to get online, if they're at home, you gave a number of staff that were essential at the, before the spring break, they were allowed to take some laptops home with them, to work on, some of those were reconfigured, so, they may not be able to participate in, say, some different types of meetings through, because pieces of, maybe their laptop doesn't work anymore, or certain things may not be that workable, but, that being that, as it may, are we allowing them to, 400 was all that you felt you needed for, and that was mainly teachers, or, and some learning center staff?
Yes, basically, we accounted for learning center staff. Yes, basically, we accounted for learning center staff in that need or that four hundred. But we also, also acquired some devices to help support with daily operations, meaning that if a student had a failed device that needed to be replaced, that we would be in some sort of position to actually address that going forward, meaning provide that student with a replaced device while the other device is being repaired.
But this, this amount also, this also, this amount also includes classified employees like registrars, school secretaries, district office personnel that need laptops to do the work remotely. So it also includes classified staff, not just certificated staff.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
So you just, PO went out on what, I don't know, on the second of April. Do you have an expected, have they given a communication about when you expect to have all these devices? Because I know that probably every district in the state has been doing the same thing.
Yes, they've provided a estimated delivery of, of six weeks. And so what, what we're actually looking at, though, is they will calculate it once the actual devices are confirmed shipped. So we're anticipating them, we're anticipating a confirmation of that hoping this week. And then basically, that ship date, when it actually arrives in Los Angeles, it'll take them a week and a half to prepare. So we're anticipating the week, or by May eighth, that we will receive them. And so then, we will actually need three to four days to prepare those for pickup via a drive-through process. And so we're trying to expedite that. But as soon as we get confirmation that it's been received in Los Angeles, then we can start planning and tightening up the dates. But at this point in time, we don't anticipate receiving them until May eighth.
When's the end of the school year?
Do you miss?
Okay, you got a couple different timelines there, but that's okay.
Well, I, I think the student calendar is, the last graduation and last day of school for students is June fifth, I think. Let me check.
Yes, that's correct.
You gave me the general, I got the general idea, so they might have it for three weeks. Okay. Thank you. I think that's all I have to ask.
Okay, do you, do you need some clarification on the first question you asked about
Yes, yes.
expenditure and indirect costs?
Yes, Dr. Saukeld will respond to that question.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Saukeld.
I know, no, it's actually, I know it's, okay. Go ahead, Dr. Saukeld.
Thank you.
I didn't know you were, I don't know what staff is on the phone line, so maybe that would be nice to have them all introduced who, who's on the call.
Olive Cabinet is on the call. Go ahead, Dr. Saukeld.
I don't know who they are. I didn't know Dan Winters was on Cabinet, so I don't know who was on Cabinet. I thought it was just the chief. So, sorry, chief.
So trustee Hall, in regards to your first inquiry on this funding and the six-hundred-and-forty-four thousand dollars that's reflected on the agenda. So in terms of the information that's also available per the first apportionment letter that was distributed on March thirtieth by the CDE, and what they also have reflected on the funding description on their website, at this point, they've indicated that the funds are used or only allowed to be used for the costs associated with maintaining nutrition services, cleaning, disinfecting facilities, personal protective equipment, and materials necessary to provide students with opportunities for distance learning. There have been some cases in the past where they have indicated that state funding does not allow for the indirect rate. But this point, we have a, a inquiry into the contact at the CDE, Julie Briggs, which is referenced on the CDE profile. I've worked with her in the past with a couple of other categorical type of special, special funding forces. So we're asking her that question. In the event that that does become something that where indirect can be applied, but however, given the emergency nature of these funds, the intent is to be used for primarily the items that I noted. But if, if in fact, there is going to be some further guidance on the indirect, that'll be adjusted. And then we can account for that, hopefully, with some of the funding that we anticipate through the CARES Act at the federal level. But at this point in time, there is no indication that indirect will be permitted. But certainly, if there's further guidance, we will adjust that accordingly.
So the profile on the CDE's website is incorrect? Is that what you're saying?
It doesn't indicate on the profile, on the funding description, and eligibility does not reference indirect.
In the SACS definition, it does. If you go into the SACS code definition, you look up that resource, and it says the LEA approved rate on indirect costs. So my concern is that we've experienced before where we didn't charge indirect and there was substantial loss to the general fund because of that. So I would like to have that clarified. And when you have that clarified, if, I, because I think we need to have the indirect costs and, at, at any case, because the other funds may eventually be recouped through other stimulus money. So.
And we, and, and the next agenda item too that we've got, we'll highlight that too. So we're, we're trying to maximize as much as possible so there is not an overall impact to the general fund, not only through the stimulus, through the CARES Act, but also through the FEMA, which is our next agenda item. So we would capture any, any applicable cost as we close out the year because so many things right now are moving so quickly as this evolves with opportunities for reimbursement for the districts and other related entities. So we will certainly make adjustments where necessary. So we've got the inquiry into the rep there at the CDE to confirm that. We do have the SACS code, the new resource number that was provided. It's seven-three-eight-eight as it relates to this funding that the district was apportioned. So we will certainly look at that.
Thank you.
But there, it is an ever-changing environment with a lot of, some of these funding opportunities. And like I said, even with CARES Act and given the timing of this agenda item, we don't even have any direction yet through the Federal Department of Education other than the apportionment will be based on Title I methodology. And we're yet to receive that information from the CDE and what that will look like.
Well, I know that there's several other districts have already projected that amount that they expect to receive from the federal money at this point. So I know that the information is out there somewhere. I understand that you may not have it yet, but I think I appreciate everything you're doing. I, I just need, for my role as a board member, a lot more detailed information on costs. So I really appreciate having that information from David especially, and all the other cost information I sent Dr. Jenny and you at the beginning of the month. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Dr. Saukeld. Mr. Solis.
Thank you, President Tarantino, but all my answers have been, all my questions have been answered, so thank you.
Okay. Mr. Pike.
I agree with Mr. Solis. All my questions have been answered by Ms. Hall's inquiries.
Okay. Vice President Segura.
Yes, so I have a couple of questions. I'd like to, you know, also say that I appreciate all the hard work that you've been doing at Edith's Point. Even though it's going to take, you know, six, six or so to get this, you know, who knows, we might need them longer than we think or, you know, to teach, hopefully not. But anyways, I appreciate everybody's effort and all the work going in to do all of this and everything at the sites. So I just was wanting that information that Paula had mentioned, just any, any financial information cost that, you know, that could be sent out to us for, you know, for possible scenarios for connectivity for our students that don't have access to the internet at home, just things of that nature. And I just kind of maybe wanted to know maybe what our lifespan is for these devices. I know there, and then, if I could just maybe, I know we have a list on that list of, of devices that we need and all that. If I could just get a, maybe I missed it, but could I, at some point, just get a chart that shows how many total devices we have? And it's not urgent, I want, but just, just so I know. And this is all for, these devices are all for just high school, is that correct? And is there anything that we're spending on, or maybe update me on what we're doing for the middle school students?
The cost, if I may answer that question, the cost is, excuse me, the device explanation there is for high schools. For our middle schools, we have adequate enough iPads to maintain operations for the rest of this year and next year, from a one-to-one program perspective. In other words, there are, there are no additional devices purchased for iPads for, for this particular reason of distance learning. Thank you.
And just, Mr. Segura, just, I know we only sent out the, the chart of the schools, school-by-school needs and additional needs, but it's in, we just sent that to the board about an hour ago, maybe an hour and a half ago now. And a lot of that information is in that, that chart that you're requesting, by school and types of devices needed. In addition to the
So that's already been sent out?
Yeah.
I must not have seen it.
Yeah, it's just about an hour and a half ago, we, we sent the board an update.
Was that under the analysis for computer device usage?
No, it's actually, Deanne DeSoto sent that out about, I want to say, two o'clock, maybe two or two-thirty today.
Okay, I must have missed that one.
Just that for you, okay.
I, I have a question. I'm just, it's not so much a question, but a point of clarification. So my understanding is that learning will continue while we're, while we're trying to figure out the connectivity aspect of, of, of distance learning by, by the traditional paper pencil method that, that teachers will be providing for those students. Is that correct? So we're not going to have a group of students, the twenty-two hundred, more or less, David, that you talked about, they're not going to be waiting around to get a, a, a technical device. They're going to be working on, on their curriculum via a different delivery system. Is that correct?
So that, I'll answer that question, Mr. Tarantino. So the answer to that question is yes.
Okay, Dr. Jenny.
We are providing other options for students. In addition, there are, there were approximately seven-hundred-and-eighty-eight students district-wide who opted out of devices this year. And so they may still, even though we offer them a device, they may still opt out of a device. That is their choice. And so there will always be a paper option for assignments that teachers will be providing for our students.
Okay, okay. And, and the teachers are aware of who those students are, correct?
Maybe, maybe not, not necessarily, because that, that option is there available for all students all the time. And the students can choose to be synchronous or asynchronous. They can choose to be, they can have, do, complete the, the assignments and enrichment activities through paper copies or through online, whatever their teacher offers them. But they can, they can choose either. So both options will be available.
Okay, all right. Do we want to go one more past? Does anybody, while we were having this discussion, have any other questions? We'll go ahead and begin. Okay.
I have, I have another request. Mr. Tarantino, Paula Hall.
Okay.
Okay. So I would request that, were those seven-hundred-and-eighty-eight students recontacted to make sure they wanted to continue as opting out? And then can't we tell the teachers who those students are so they know? Because I, I've been hearing people are not responding necessarily. Some people, some students and even parents are maybe not having the ability to respond and it's because they're either not technic, they don't have the technology still, or they have, you know. So I think teachers need that information if they don't already have it. But I would also like to know what the protocols are for sanitation and protection on the, when there is packets being sent out and returned and all of that. What, I'd like to know how they're being handled to ensure, you know, they're secure and sanitized. So if you could let us know that, not today, but in an email, in a Friday update, whatever you want, I would, I appreciate. And I, I want to thank Nick for asking the question about middle schools, because I totally missed that. I, I don't know, I guess I read too fast and missed that, so thank you. That's all.
Carol, do you have any other questions? Hello?
Hello?
This is Solis.
I lost you. Yeah, yeah, I came up with this, just with regards to, I know we have to do this quickly. Is there any, like, legal ramifications or anything that, that our legal counsel looked through to make sure, like, that this contract or anything that we do is, like, we're protected or anything along the same?
Could you, could you repeat that question again, Mr. Solis? And George Williams is also on, available, our purchasing manager, and he can help respond to that question with Jenny Carbuchia. But could you repeat that question one more time, please?
Yeah, just with regards to, like, I know we have to do this quickly. So sometimes we overlook some legal ramifications or anything. I'm just wondering if everything was gone through and were, were safe from any, like, I mean, legal liability or whatnot. Legal, legal went through this and checked it out and make sure we're, we're okay.
Sure, okay. So George is actually here available to start, start that response. And then if Jenny Carbuchia wants to jump in, she should feel free. Go ahead, George.
Turn the mic on. Button up. And talk close.
I'm, I'm not hearing anybody.
Oh, you know what? Maybe they're not on.
Hang on.
Sorry.
We're hanging on.
I thought all the mics were on and they're not. One second.
Thank you for the question. I appreciate that. And good evening, President Tarantino, board members, and Superintendent Jenny. Just wanted to walk through the process that we took to get where we're at. So on March thirty-first, we sent a letter to the County Office of Education asking for an emergency waiver request. In that letter, we mentioned that on March twenty-third, per Resolution forty-six-sixty-four, that resolution gives the district the ability to immediately act and to take any, any and all necessary actions to repair, or excuse me, prepare and respond effectively to the novel, novel coronavirus. And so, again, that resolution ensured that we would need to have all the tools necessary to handle any contingencies associated with an emergency. Also, per Public Contract Code two-zero-one-one-three, that provides in an emergency, the board may by unanimous vote make a contract in writing without advertising forbid. And so we know that Ari Jones, that is a vendor that we have used in the past. There is a contract that's currently held by Los Angeles Unified School District. And so we have those contract documents in our file. So we took the letter on March thirty-first. Again, the county responded that they had no exceptions to it, and so we moved forward.
And, and George, it's my understanding that we're piggybacking with And, and George, is, is my understanding that we're piggybacking with LA Unified on this, and that's why we were able to get the discounts that we were able to get, is that correct?
Uh, yes, that's correct. Um, the LA Unified School District, we have, uh, two, they have two contracts that we piggyback, uh, off, um, for those excellent prices, and those contracts expire in, um, I believe, June of twenty-twenty-one.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for doing that research, that was excellent. Um, we got substantial discounts and, uh, that really helped out, so thank you, George. Appreciate it.
Mr. Tarantino?
Yes.
Just, just one, I think he may have answered it, but I just want to clarify, and maybe Jenny has the answer, but, um, Ms. Carbuchia, did the ca, what did we do, did we contact the County Office of Education, their finance division, and ensure that they had the information that we were doing that, I mean, obviously it's a ratification now, so I don't know if they can stop it or not, but I think that's important.
Hi, Ms. Hall, yeah, this is Jenny. Um, so when we went to pass the resolution previously, um, that gave Dr. Janney emergency authority, um, we did send that information over to the county office specifically to make sure they would have no concerns with us moving forward with the ratification, um, of these contracts. That was our first step.
And, um, on, uh, March twenty-sixth, um, George also sent all this information over to Mike Simonson, and he agreed that it didn't really require an emergency, um, authorization because it's a piggyback, but not an emergency authorization for the superintendent, but an emergency authorization as far as a piggyback, we already have that. But he, we already did, um, run that through the county office on March twenty-sixth.
Thank you. Well, they, they raised issues with it before, I thought, so, anyway, I appreciate, uh, both the General Counsel Carbuchia and Mr. Williams', um, answers, thank you.
Mr. Pearl, does that-
Thank you very much.
Does that, does that answer your question? You have another one.
Yes, that's it, that's it, I appreciate it, thank you, President Tarantino.
Okay. All right, Mr. Pike? Any other questions, or?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Mr. Segura? Any other questions come to mind during the discussion?
Yeah, just, so I, I know, we, it was stated that, you know, we won't give the computers for, like, six weeks or so, now, so what is our, just kind of what is our, somebody walked through, walked me through and us through what our distance learning is going to look like? Does that mean that, that the computer learning or, you know, over the internet is not going to happen until everybody gets your computers, or it's going to work for people who are students who have computers right now? And just kind of that scenario?
Well, I, Nick, I think, I think this item just depend, just is regarding the purchase of the items, not, not the specifics about distance learning, is, can I get, can I get a, a ruling on that? Can we even talk about that?
Not under this item, per se. This item is just for the ratification of the purchase of devices. Uh, I would warn against getting-
Well, it'd be really helpful if we're making a decision on this, and we can't even, I just, you know, want it kind of a, that's very, a very simple, I don't understand why we can't ask that question.
So, Anna Maria?
Yeah, no, it's not, it's not a set idea, but just kind of curious, does that mean that, like I said, is it, are we going to wait for six weeks for that, or are we going to talk about that in a couple of weeks, this is helping?
Okay, this is Karen, and no, we're not going to wait for six weeks, we are moving forward with distance learning, and just in a, in a brief way, Anna Maria, can you describe the different, what distance learning is, uh, and the difference between asynchronous and synchronous, and, um, paper options versus online options?
Sure. Good evening, board members, Mr. Tarantino, Dr. Janney. Um, so we've offered, um, our teachers currently, as you know, they are in training, they've been in training for the last two weeks. We are offering two approaches. One is called asynchronous, that means that it's not in real time, and so what we're asking teachers is to develop lesson plans that can be, um, provided through either a digital platform or through email, text, any way to get the information to the, to the student. Um, students would then respond in their own time, and it wouldn't be a face-to-face, um, virtual meeting. The second option that we have is, um, the synchronous, which means that teachers would be online in a virtual conference with students, um, giving, providing lessons. Um, we are asking teachers to try the asynchronous method first, um, and that will provide more access to students as we get devices. Um, teachers will also provide through, um, plans that are being directed at the school site. They will provide, um, paper copies for students who do not have, um, devices or connectivity at this time.
Does that help, Mr. Segura?
Yeah, that's a good, kind of, ballpark idea. I just kind of know more about it when we can actually talk about it and how, you know, how students, I, I just hate for anybody, and I know nobody else wants to, you know, have, um, any students that be, have any disadvantage because they don't have a computer and they have to work off a paper and that sort of stuff. It's really my concern, but that'll work for now.
Okay. Um, Ethan, do you have any other questions since we've been discussing this?
The only main question I'm having is that, if, like, this purchase does go through, and I would like to know this as well, is like, the state procedures for distribution, because that's like a thing now we need to really mind about people's health during this time, so just like, information on that would be really great.
That's a great question. This is Karen. This is Karen, uh, Mr. Tarantino. Uh, that's a great question, Ethan.
Yes.
Um, we are in the process, we have a protocol process that has been de, developed by Dr. Foulter and a, and a team of, uh, principals around how, um, students may come on campus to get things that they need, like a cord for their computer, or maybe some things they left in a locker or a classroom. Um, we have those protocols in place, but we are holding off, um, for a little while because it has been shared across the nation and in our state, that right now is probably the peak time that we do not want a lo, any kind of gathering of people on, at, at any place, any location. So, we've got those plans in place, Ethan, and when we're ready to roll those out, we'll be sharing that not only with staff, but with, uh, the community. So it's a great question, and we are taking all of that into consideration as we move forward, following all health guidelines around, uh, disinfecting surfaces as well as, um, you know, like today, we put out, the board members, maybe you've seen, we sent out to all employees today, a health, public health guideline, as far as distancing and, uh, going on campus, wearing face coverings or masks. Um, so we are following, um, and sharing that information as we get it, it's almost daily that it gets updated, and we continue to send updates out to staff as we receive them. So, great question, Ethan, thank you.
Awesome, thank you, I answered my question.
Okay. Okay, if, uh, there's no more questions and, uh, no more discussion, I will, uh, accept the motion to ratify the emergency purchase of three-thousand-one-hundred computer devices from Erie Jones, twenty-seven-hundred Lenovo Chromebooks, and four-hundred Lenovo Windows X laptops, to be used for students and staff for distance learning and telework needs.
I'll make a motion, Kevin Pike.
Second. Number seven. Okay, so, moved by, moved by Pike, seconded by Solis. Uh, Madam Clerk, will you call for the vote, please?
Hall?
Yes.
Solis?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
Segura?
Yes.
Tarantino?
Yes.
Collier?
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Okay. Um, moving on to item C-two, um, and that is to approve the application of the Department of Homeland Security's Federal Emergency Management Agency, request for public assistance and related documents.
We're going to go to, um, Dr. Salkeld to provide some background information on this, please.
Okay. Dr. Salkeld.
Thank you, uh, forthside and trustee Tarantino and, uh, Dr. Janney. So in regards to this item here, this is actually in relation to, um, actually some guidance that we recently received from the CDE for school districts to submit an application to the Federal, um, Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, uh, for possible, uh, assistance with some of the costs that we've been incurring, whether it's inclusive of these IT devices or for distance learning or for maintenance-related, uh, costs for personal protective equipment, um, any additional time incurred by staff, um, including perhaps the nutrition services. Um, so at this point, uh, we've been, uh, working through a couple of webinars that, that have been held either by the county of San Diego or through the governor's office of emergency services. Uh, and so these documents are required, um, there's a deadline of this week, to have these submitted for consideration, and so the district currently is eligible at this point. Um, there has been conversation, um, on releasing some funds early on, that's what is a reference of three million dollars. As we compile this information, um, they could give an advance, uh, amount on that, um, of half, of half of that. But these documents, uh, provide assurances, um, resolutions that are required by the board and the application itself, in order for us to submit to the governor's office and to the FEMA. Um, so we, we've been approved with a, a disaster number at this point through, uh, the state, um, now is pending, uh, further authorization from FEMA.
Okay. Okay, we'll go ahead and, uh, and go down the dius again for, uh, questions and, and discussion. Uh, Vice Segura.
Thanks, Mr. Tarantino, I have no questions.
Okay. Mr. Pike?
Yeah, I, I just have a question, Doctor. Um, you're talking about the requests and stuff, do you, like, submit, uh, proposed budgets of exactly what's going to, what it's going to cost, or are we just going to get a certain amount of money and then it's just going to be distributed?
Correct. So at this point, it, you know, they're looking at all the applications of everyone who's eligible, um, they, if, if so, depending on all of the applications that are submitted, they will give us an allocation, um, but we are required to provide documentation, it's almost in essence like a reimbursement, um, to support anything that we would have been given in advance, so if they were to give us, um, let's say, a million-five or however, uh, for cost, we have to submit a, a reimbursement claim. So there will be a lot of documentation and information that we need to support for that.
Dr. Salkeld, could you just go into a little more, um, detail about how we're already trying to track a lot of this information in preparation for, um, requests of information from, from this or other sources?
Yes, perfect, yeah, because we, we've set up a new cost center, um, within our, our accounting system, so that when we work with departments, as an example, with maintenance, um, they've already incurred to date seventy-thousand-dollar costs, um, so those have already been processed, requisitions and POs, so what we'll do is reclass those costs to where they've already got it in the budget, assign it to this new cost center so that we can keep track of this. And then any future transactions that, um, my understanding is, like, Mr. Malone's already looking at, you know, setting up things for, for the protective, uh, personal equipment, um, sanitizing, all these different items, that as costs are incurred now going forward, we've established this code, um, this cost center, they will now, uh, assign all of those costs to that, and we will be monitoring that, um, over the next few weeks and into months, um, so that way we can run a report to query off of that information, uh, for the claim itself. Again, the, the claim details, all of that has not been provided, this is such an early stage, uh, right now, the, the guidance from the CDE is, get your application in, get this processed and getting queue, uh, for possible available funds. So we are tracking what we know at this point is very much directly associated with the COVID-nineteen, um, so that way when that opportunity comes to submit that, we have that documentation.
Thank you, Dr. Salkeld, that helped, thank you very much.
Hey, Mr. Solis?
Thank you, President Tarantino, yeah, my question was going to be with regards if we were already tracking, uh, the, what, what funds we've already spent or using, what, uh, so, so thank you for answering that, Dr. Salkeld, and that'll be it.
Let me just, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Tarantino, may I add one more thing?
Sure.
We're also tracking, one of the things that we don't know right now, but we will still have to track, has to do with the, um, absences and, and claims from staff, so there's an HR function to this as well, that we're, uh, we don't have all that information because we don't have, not everyone has submitted leaves or things like that, but HR will also be tracking attendance and leaves and things like that, that, um, with also, with guidance from the CDE. So there, you know, each major area, HR, maintenance, IT, um, teaching and learning, um, almost every aspect of the district has a role in this tracking piece, and so, um, it's, it's, we've got systems in, we've got a system in place, we just haven't been able to fill in all of the blanks yet because we don't know all the answers, but we are working on it. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Hall?
I don't have any questions, thanks.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Collier?
I also don't have any questions.
Okay, I, I did have a question, and my question, Dr. Salkeld, is, is this funding source a reimbursement in addition to the federal CARES, um, legislation, or is this part of that whole package?
Now, this is in addition to, and the guidance that has been shared through some of these webinars, um, is first we would use the SB-one-one-seven funding from the state, then we would use the CARE Act funding, and then this would be, if there's anything left over that was, we could still claim, we can a, address that, that way.
Okay.
So it gives us almost in essence right now three avenues from a funding standpoint.
To make ourselves whole in terms of our expenditures dealing with this, uh, virus outbreak, is that correct?
Correct. As much as possible to keep things whole or help, um, cover the, the cost incurred, yes.
Okay, great, great. Um, okay, are there, are there any other questions?
I just have, have one thing to say-
Sure.
About what you just said. So, that will never get us where we need to be as far as all the expense around the digital learning and, because I don't think the, the feds are reimbursing us for that at this point, are they, Ms. Salkeld?
From the federal standpoint, yes, the CARES Act and so from up here is very much, uh, catered towards the distance learning piece.
Oh, it is? That's my, that, I didn't realize.
Uh-huh, there is, um, it's authorized, there's funding for flexibility to support continued learning, yes.
So you think that, in that thirteen-billion-dollar package that they directed for schools, will have enough to reimburse us and set us up for every student to have a device in digital learning?
Like I mentioned earlier, I don't have the allocation.
Well, I don't think it's going to-
I don't have-
I'll tell you, when, in two thousand eight, the, the feds had three times that amount of money, and we didn't have, and, uh, we, school districts were still cut twenty percent in California, so I don't think what they put in the thirteen-billion-dollar package is going to be enough. So I think we need to prepare it to really, uh, pass this and let it go, and you guys do your diligence, did work on all those expenses, and, and for us, we really need the costing of all these additional things that we're doing for digital learning, for all these shortfalls, um, to have staffing, and, and especially if we think it's going to continue through the fall, that is key, that we keep moving forward to, um, be able to do the work we need to do if we're all still sequestered at home. So, that's what I, Mr. Phil, thank you.
Any other, any other discussion or questions on item C-two? If not, then I will, uh, accept the motion to approve the application of the Department of Homeland Security's Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, request for public assistance and related documents.
Uh, make the motion.
Member seven.
Paula Hall.
No, second A. Member Solis. Moved by, moved by Hall, seconded by Solis. Madam Clerk, will you call for the vote?
Collier?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Solis?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
Segura?
Yes.
Tarantino?
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero. Hall.
Yes.
Solis.
Yes.
Pike.
Yes.
Segura.
Yes.
Tarantino.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, next we'll move on to the last item, C three, which is to adopt resolution number four six six seven, declaring emergency conditions exist at schools and offices in the Sweetwater Union High School District and modifying graduation promotion requirements for students currently enrolled. Dr. Janney.
Sure, it's pretty clear here as far as the resolution and the agenda analysis that a recommendation, the superintendents have weekly calls with the county office. And this was one of the recommendations sent out by the county office that all districts put this resolution in place in case there is a situation. And right now, we've already made some adjustments, like for example, you know that we made, we eliminated the community service requirement for seniors this year because they are unable to go out and complete their community service hours for graduation requirements. So we've eliminated that or suspended that for this year. But there may come a moment, an individual case, where we may need to make a decision on a particular case for students going forward that will need to give the superintendent emergency authorization. I will tell you that the teaching and learning and equity and culture teams have a couple of side committees working on not only graduation requirements in the grad plan, but other situations that are arising at school sites, including students who were scheduled to take perhaps, one of the best examples is a health class, a lot of students wait till their senior year to take a health class requirement, and typically, sometimes they take it either through Southwestern College or through another online course, and those may not be available at this point in time. And so those are some of the examples that we need some flexibility on, school sites do or school districts do. And so this resolution just gives school districts an opportunity to make those decisions in an emergency.
Okay, well, go ahead and go down the dais. Mr. Collier.
I was actually wondering about the health situation because that's a big common thing, like a lot of juniors this year are taking health, especially, and some of my senior friends as well are taking health this year. So I'm wondering that if the situation does get really drastic and, you know, Southwestern courses aren't available. So with this resolution, the superintendent has had to give the right to waive the requirement?
Did you ask, was that a question? Was that a question, Ethan?
Yeah, I think that, I think that was a question, yes.
So right now, principals already have the authority to waive some courses in situations. It's, we have regulations on that in practice, and those don't get approved unless it goes through teaching and learning or the curriculum and instruction office. But yes, this, this particular resolution gives the school districts the autonomy and the authority to make some different decisions around graduation requirements that we wouldn't normally have to make if we weren't in this situation.
Oh, I see, okay, because I was wondering, because I know that National University of Central High Schools offers the courses, I don't know if Sweetwater had looked into to cover some of those requirements, one of them is health, and they have three PE courses which cover at least a semester of PE. So I don't know if we were also looking into that as a possible solution. So just something I wanted to ask, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mrs. Hall.
Okay, this is Paula, so my question would be around, I just came up with it, now I can't remember. So I really don't, I think you have the authority and you'll do the right thing around students. I know mine went to the biliteracy, I know there's, I saw something that it's still going to be offered, is that correct? The seal of biliteracy of the state, I saw something from the state about that, is that correct? And you'll still have the opportunity to offer that on the diploma for students that have that work done or close to being done, is that correct?
Let me let Dr. Alvarez answer that question, are you, have you heard the latest on that, Dr. Alvarez?
Yes, thank you, I don't have the latest information. One of the requirements for the seal of biliteracy is a proficiency on the ELA test back. And so the state is coming up with requirements that would replace that. And so I don't have the latest on that, but I believe it's the intent of the state to be able to continue offering the seal, potentially with some differing requirements.
Okay. Is there anything to do with specialized students that we would need to be aware of that maybe this would touch upon, that you can think of?
That's a good question. I'm going to defer to Dr. Foltzer on that one, I can't think of something right now, but maybe he can.
Yeah, well, thanks, and I hope you can hear me okay. I don't think it's going to have an impact on our kids with disabilities. We do have some authority by virtue of what's placed in IEPs to make some adjustments. The big concern, you handled in the previous item, and that's around compensatory services and supports. We know there's going to be some aggression with a number of our students. We just need to be prepared to enable them to recoup on some of those skills they'll probably lose during their time away from school. And it's not going to be all of our 5,000-plus kids, but some will certainly be impacted by this distance approach. And we're going to do everything in our power to make sure they receive the support they need. But in terms of graduation, I don't think there's going to be anything in this item that would impact special ed, our students in our special ed program specifically.
All right, thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Foltzer, Mr. Solis.
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Pike.
No questions, thank you.
Vice President Segura.
Yes, so my question is, is there, my computer went dead, it charged upstairs. Is there a timeline on this, amount of time, like a sunset clause or something that we can possibly renew later? What's the wording in this resolution around that?
I think, I think it only goes through the, this year because as far as, right now, the COVID-19 decisions are all revolving around the 1920 school year. I'm looking at the resolution right now.
And the resolution says for students currently enrolled, and it's during the pandemic, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I think.
Can we just make it clear that, does it say for this school year? I just want to make sure, you know, that it does specify that, I think that's important.
I don't think it specifies this school year.
I'm, I'm looking at the resolution right now.
I think it can be amended, right? If you say how it's amended.
Was this, I have a question, was this, usually if the department, if San Diego County Office of Ed, if they make a recommendation, they usually send a template. Is this, was this, was this resolution fashioned after their, a template that they sent? Or is this something that we provided in-house?
Yeah, no, this is the template we use from the county office. And, you know, even though it says requirements for students currently enrolled, we could put somewhere in there that says, you know, for the remainder of this, you know, the remainder of the 2019-20 school year, we could do that. Because.
I think that would be good, he can always bring back another resolution to extend it or another action item later next year if needed.
Okay. So that. Yes, go ahead, Archuro.
Oh, just looking through the resolution, I think where it states that the governor of the state of California issued, has issued the executive order N 3320. I think as long as that's in effect, then this would be in effect. I think if that's not in effect, then this wouldn't be in effect, that's the way it looks at it.
That makes sense.
Okay, that does make sense, yes, that does make sense. And again, I think the overall, the overarching thing that's coming down from both the CDE and the governor and superintendent of schools, Mr. Thurman, is that no one, no one is to be harmed by all of this, that decisions will be made in the best interest of kids and not to, and not to hold them in harm because of what's happening with the outbreak. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Mr. Tarantino.
Yes, go ahead, Paula.
Yeah, well, my only thought, and I appreciate Archuro noticing that because my computer died too, or I can't get it signed in for some reason. I'm in my car just at my office for teleconferences. So, you know, trying to balance, get on your knees and sign in on that, their first keyboard is, it's like, is this even going to work? I'm glad, you know, so it's one of those things, you know, besides I'm just, you know, kind of clutching at my fingers are fat, so when I type anything, it's always wrong. But I was wondering if we could, I hear what Mr. Segura is saying as well, that he has a concern for this being in for whatever purpose. And even if the governor's action kind of guides this, if we have an end date for this particular one and then reopen it, because if, in the worst-case scenario, if we go through digital learning through the next year, all the way to the next year, I think we're going to have a very different approach than what we're going to waive and what we're not going to waive. So that's my only concern, I could hear where Mr. Segura might be thinking in that term. So, I don't know, it won't hurt to put it at that sentence in this one and then come back when it's needed to be extended or renewed next year with a different end date.
President Tarantino.
Yes, go ahead.
Just wondering if we could maybe ask our general counsel to see what she thinks, I think that might help.
Okay.
I think clarity, I think Dr. Janney's sentence that she stated is probably the easiest to ensure there's clarity. The governor's order could continue into next year, and I think there's a lot of reasons for us to want to renew it. So I would probably suggest that there be a motion that includes what Dr. Janney had said, which is adopt the resolution, you know, number X, Y, and Z, that would be effective for the remainder of the 1920 school year.
And I'd make that motion.
I'll second it.
Can I just make one more comment, Mr. Tarantino?
Yes.
So, just going back to the name of the resolution, and I don't want to split hairs, but it does, it does say that modifying graduation promotion requirements for students currently enrolled, and I believe that means for the students currently enrolled in those grade levels. So either way, I can go either way, I'm just trying to think about why the county put it in language this way. And I think it's because it refers to this year's seniors and eighth graders. But either way, works for me.
I would still, I would say that the county does a template, that we make our own, we're the ones that have to set our own policies, and that's why we're a board, so, thanks.
Okay, so I didn't catch who made the. Okay, go ahead, Ethan.
I wanted to know that, have you, like, I just want, I just wanted information if we had ever considered a universal pass for the semester or a pass fail system for grades?
That's, we haven't, I don't think a decision has been made about that yet, and.
Actually, we do, we do have a decision about that, Mr. Tarantino.
Okay, go ahead.
We are recommending, I mean, Dr. Alvarez and the team of teachers and counselors who have been meeting, we are sticking with a grade format, not a pass fail, Ethan, because our current student information system allows only grades. It's not set up for a pass fail or credit, no credit. And in order to put that in place would not give us enough time before the end of the school year. So with our philosophy of no harm, do no harm, students can only improve their grades, we feel like we're in a safe place, it was part of the discussion that was held on Friday with the teachers. Is that correct, Dr. Alvarez?
Correct.
Okay.
Dr. Janney, correct, we did discuss that with the teachers and with the principal.
Okay, that's my question, thank you.
Does that answer your question, Ethan?
Yep. I think we had a motion and a second for the amended items, I believe, yeah.
I missed, I missed the, who made the motion, I know that Solis seconded it. Was it, Paula, did you make the motion?
It was me, Mr. Tarantino.
Mr. Segura.
Okay, okay, so I'm hearing, I'm hearing a couple things. The first thing I heard was that we're amending, we're amending the resolution, but, so we're adopting resolution four six six seven, declaring emergency conditions, all that stuff, for students, are we, are we amending?
We're amending the title of the resolution. We're amending that title of the resolution, and it'll say for students currently enrolled in the 2019-2020 school year.
And where's that going to, where's that going to be seen in the resolution itself, under, be it further resolved?
It'll be in the title, up at the top, it'll be added to the title of the resolution.
Okay.
Which is what your superintendent's recommendation is.
Yeah. Is that, is that clear to everybody, is everybody okay with that? Well, I'm not going to ask for the vote yet, but are you okay with where it's going to appear that it's only for this academic school year? You all, everyone okay with that?
Yes.
All right, okay, so there's been a move by Segura and seconded by Solis. Madam Clerk, will you call for the vote?
Collier.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Solis.
Yes.
Pike.
Yes.
Segura.
Yes.
Tarantino.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, well, before I adjourn, I'd like to thank everybody who worked on the quality of sound and coming up with the workaround so that we could all hear each other better. Quality of sound was much better this time, and I appreciate everybody putting their heads together to come up with some solutions to make it work better. And also, Ms. Vasito, thank you for coming up with that form, that fillable form for speakers who were willing to come forward and speak. I think that was an excellent way of handling how we deal with members of our community who wanted to address the board on certain items, so thank you for that. And if there's no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.